Evening colleagues, ladies and gentlemen, please be seated. Welcome to this extraordinary meeting of the council. May I also warmly welcome our key workers, representatives who are present in person in the gallery today, as well as those watching from home or at work, in light of this meeting being recorded and livestreamed. If any member of the public or press would like to record the proceedings themselves, please do this from the public gallery without causing a disturbance or interfering with today's business of the meeting. If the fire alarm should sound, can those sitting in the public gallery leave by the doors behind them and those sitting on the council chamber floor leave with the doors behind myself? Anyone who needs assistance, please remain seated and a member of staff will support you, and we all congregate should that happen at the front of the town hall. May I please ask members, officers and members of the public to limit disturbances. Please ensure that mobile phones and other electronic devices are turned off during the meeting. Any member who wishes to speak on any of the agenda items should use the microphones provided in front of you. There is a button to switch them on, they need to be elevated so you can be heard, and when you have finished speaking, please remember to switch them off because that does interfere with the microphones in the chamber. Members should indicate that they wish to speak by raising their hand and being invited to speak by myself. All other councillors must remain silent whilst another member is speaking. Can I also take this opportunity to remind members that the code of conduct applies to this meeting and we should always demonstrate respectful, courteous behaviour? Members are also reminded that this extraordinary meeting will deal only with the business that is set out on the summons and that the ordinary meeting of the Borough Council will take place at the rise of this meeting. I must remind members that under the provision of the Local Government Act of 1972, it would be necessary to have a formal vote on the motion so that there is certainty as to the resolution being passed. We must have this by not less than two thirds of the members voting. Members will therefore be asked whether they agree, disagree or wish to abstain from the vote. We will record the outcome of the vote and we will announce it at this meeting. I have received apologies from the following councillors: councillors Amar, Duncan and Kennedy. Are there any other apologies? Yes, councillor Bell? Thank you. Yes, councillor Proudlock? Thank you. Yes, councillor Heatherington? Thank you. Are there any other apologies? Thank you. The next item of business, item one on this evening's agenda, is declarations of interest. Does any member wish to make any declarations before we move on to the main item of business? Thank you, colleagues. Sorry councillor Flynn, I didn't see your hand.
Yeah Chair, as a member of the fire authority, I have a pecuniary interest but I have no reason to leave the meeting.
Thank you councillor Flynn.
Yes, Madam May, declare an interest as a member of the fire authority of a pecuniary interest but no need to leave the meeting.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? We now move on to item two. Item two is honorary freedom of the borough. The only item of business at this meeting specially convened is to consider the proposal in accordance with section 249 of the Local Government Act 1972, to bestow the honorary freedom of the borough upon all of the borough's national health services, the borough's care services, key workers in recognition of their services for the dedication to the people of South Tyneside throughout the coronavirus pandemic. The freedom of the borough is the highest honour that the council can grant. I will ask councillor Dixon, leader of the council, to move the motion. The motion will then be open to debate. Councillor Dixon?
Yes, thank you, Madam May. At our meeting on the 29th of September 2022, this council agreed to the first steps that would be required to confer the highest honour the council can bestow to all NHS carers and key workers. Today, we make this a reality. Being granted the freedom of the borough is the highest honour to be bestowed on any individual or organisation. Freedom of the borough is an ancient privilege dating back to the 1600s and is reserved only for those deemed to have given eminent service. The council is pleased to be bestowing its highest honour on such deserving recipients. Colleagues, today this is about us honouring a commitment made almost three years ago to the borough's heroes, to those individuals who supported us, our communities and each other through what was one of the largest pre- peacetime emergencies of our generation. In 2020, we made a commitment to consider the conferral of the freedom of the borough to all national health service, care workers and key workers in recognition of their selfless service and dedication to the people of South Tyneside in the face of the greatest personal risk brought about by the coronavirus pandemic. Every single one of us in the room will have their own story to tell about the sacrifices that they were made during the height of the pandemic, but these individuals and the organisations that they represent put themselves on the front line in the war against COVID. And whilst our journey with COVID continues, I am at least pleased to say that developments over the last three years means that we can sit here now in a position to come together and celebrate our COVID heroes. Sitting here like this today would have been unthinkable at the moment and it really is a testament to how far we have come. Although there are thousands of local key workers who have been recognised in this honour, we have directly invited representatives from a range of sectors to be physically present on behalf of their colleagues from different sectors who are with us here today and ensured that wider colleagues can join in via the live stream. On behalf of the council and the entire borough, I thank you all for your service. COVID was the biggest global health crisis of our lifetime, a fast-moving, ever-evolving situation which demanded the health, care, public sector and those providing essential services stepping up to the plate. Individuals working with rapidly changing circumstances, with extended working hours and often working flexible in new or different roles, whilst the government announced major policy changes nationally, solutions were developed locally. Our collective priorities were keeping our community safe, getting help to those who needed it most and continuing to deliver the essential services that residents relied on more than ever. The resilience, strength and courage of our NHS care and key workers will never be forgotten and that is why it is only fitting that we grant the highest honour to be bestowed, the freedom of the borough. Therefore, and pursuant to section 249 of the Local Government Act 1972, I move that the council of the borough of South Tyneside hereby admit all of the borough's national health service, care services and key workers the honorary freedom of the borough in recognition of their selfless service and dedication to the people of South Tyneside in the face of the greatest personal risk thought about them by the coronavirus pandemic. Thank you, Madam May.
Thank you councillor Dixon. Is that seconded? Thank you councillor Foreman. Does any other member wish to speak? Councillor Stonehouse?
Thank you. This has been a long time in coming. If you'll just indulge me, I left school and became the cadet nurse at sixteen in the seventies. I witnessed the care and dedication and commitment of my peers. We had a ward sister, staff nurse, student nurses, auxiliaries and one cadet nurse on each ward. As a patient in 2010, there were two nurses per ward and another nurse working between two wards. As an evening visitor in 2020, visitors waited while two nurses administered hygiene care to a ward of elderly patients. The care dedication and commitment has never diminished, but the number of nursing staff working has. It was the same level of gratitude that we applaud all care workers, NHS and social care sector. On behalf of my colleagues, I would like to thank all key workers and NHS care staff and for all the selflessness, the professionalism throughout the years and hope we see more staff on the wards as it should be.
Thank you councillor Stonehouse. Councillor Barclay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I am delighted to be part of this meeting to recognise the incredible contribution made by NHS care services, care workers and key workers during the pandemic. Each and every one played a vital role in supporting our communities at one of our most crucial periods in our history. Their dedication went way beyond the remit of their roles. Frontline staff would not have been able to deliver without the support of all their colleagues and all put their health and wellbeing at risk to care for and protect our residents and communities during uncharted and unprecedented times. The resilience of those we honour today was extraordinary. In the worst of times, their dedication was a shining light of hope, when all we needed was to see their confidence and their belief in what they were doing. The pressures they all worked through were extreme and like many, some suffered personal loss too, but still dedicated themselves to helping others. The response that we gave across the borough was due to all those we honour today and I am privileged to be part of acknowledging the contribution to each and every one. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you councillor Barclay. Colleagues, as this item requires a vote, I will now ask the monitoring officer to read out the name of each member in alphabetical order and ask them how they wish to vote. Yes, certainly. I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand councillor Robertson.
Thank you. Yeah, it's a pleasure to be part of this. It was just amazing what everybody doing and it could only happen in the UK that here and now we've got the same people having to strike for a decent wage and that's not at any government because each government would do the same. They never had their rewards before the pandemic, they're still not getting their rewards now, this is great what we're doing, but they're just so disrespected and we are so grateful. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Robinson. Does any other member wish to speak? No? As I said, colleagues, we will now take a vote and I will ask the monitoring officer to carry out that process, Mrs Robinson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Elected members, I will read each of your names alphabetically and ask that you would please indicate clearly using the microphone as to whether you are for, against or abstaining from the vote. Councillor Atkinson?
For.
Councillor Bell?
For.
Councillor Barclay?
For.
Councillor Best? Councillor Brennan?
For.
Councillor Carter?
For.
Councillor Dawes?
For.
Councillor Peaden?
For.
Councillor Esteen?
For.
Councillor Dixon?
For.
Councillor Donaldson?
For.
Councillor Ellison?
For.
Councillor Flynn?
For.
Councillor Foreman?
For.
Councillor Forster?
For.
Councillor Francis?
For.
Councillor Guy?
For.
Councillor Herbert?
For.
Councillor Heatherington?
For.
Councillor Huntley?
For.
Councillor Keegan? Councillor Kilgawa? Councillor Lamont?
For.
Councillor McHugh?
For.
Councillor McKeown? Councillor Melling? Councillor Milburn?
For.
Councillor Peacock?
For.
Councillor Porthouse?
For.
Councillor Potts?
For.
Councillor Proudlock?
For.
Councillor Roberts?
For.
Councillor Robertson?
For.
Councillor Stonehouse?
For.
Councillor Taylor?
For.
Councillor Thompson? Councillor Welsh?
Colleagues, that is unanimous, thirty-seven votes in favour. The motion is agreed to bestow the honorary freedom of the borough upon all of the borough's national health service, care services, key workers in recognition of their services for the dedication to the people of South Tyneside throughout the coronavirus pandemic. To all the local national health service, care services and key workers, the council of the borough of South Tyneside has by resolution declared that you as a group of the distinction who, in the opinion of the council, rendered eminent services to our borough in times of great hardship and uncertainty. The scroll, which is down here, conferring this honour will be hereafter displayed in South Shields Town Hall for all the honorees and their families and friends to view. Many congratulations to you all. Can I please invite selected representatives of key sectors to stand and make a short speech? First of all, I'd like to ask Matthew Walmsley on behalf of the health sector.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Councillors, it is indeed a great honour to be here today and to be asked to make this speech on behalf of my colleagues. It used to be a standing joke that if you wanted to catch a nasty bug, a general practice waiting room was the place to go, but three years ago, that turned from a standing joke to a matter of life and death. We saw rapid changes in the way my colleagues and I were working with something new every week, every day at times thrown at us by this pandemic. Often in South Tyneside, we were ahead of making many changes that were made nationally. We got there first, we did things first, we reacted very quickly to help, to work differently for the benefit of the population. And I just want to pay a massive tribute to all the colleagues who made that possible, to the leadership team around general practice and the health service for always being ready and reacting with courage and humanity throughout this crisis. So my thanks really, as well as to you, goes to all of those colleagues who worked so hard. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to call on Shahzad Wahid on behalf of the health sector also.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. It's a great privilege to receive this honour, the highest award that South Tyneside Council can award. On behalf of the trust and all my NHS colleagues, I would like to thank South Tyneside Council for this prestigious accolade. There's no doubt that we have faced the most testing times over the last few years. But equally, COVID-19 has shone a light on what makes us strong as a local community: care, compassion, resilience and a willingness to pull together in a crisis. These are strengths which were embodied by our amazing NHS staff throughout the pandemic, both in our hospitals and out in the community. Our staff have continued to give outstanding care each and every day to patients and their families, raising a smile at times when it felt like there was nothing but fear, as well as providing the much-needed support, dignity and reassurance during the darkest moments. There are no words that I can adequately express and the pride I feel working with my colleagues in the hospital and out in the community. in the hospital and out in the community. And I'm very glad to see that we've recognised the wider community who are with me today. This is a fitting contribution to the bravery they have shown and the sacrifice they have made during the pandemic. And while the pressures we face sadly are still here, it makes all the difference to know that those efforts are held in such esteem. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd now like to call upon Dori Dimmer on behalf of the care sector and specifically the care homes.
Thank you, Madam May. I'm so honoured to be here today, also so proud to represent my colleagues, the care homes, the care sectors. What can I say about pandemics? We all know, time of frustration, long hours, sad, we lost people, people that we cared of and people that we loved. But also it's something else. We became a family. We became so close, we were so close. I've seen so much courage, so much commitment, love and care. Also, we are a big family with the community, with the other services here, well, I can't thank you enough, with the council, with the commissioners, trying to support us all the time. Little things that was helping us to keep going. I came here with a message and with a story. Last week in Rosway, in our care home, we got a present from one of our family. It was a care ring with a rainbow. And he says, may you be proud of the work you do, the person you are and the difference you make. Thank you for recognising today the difference we made. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd now like to call on Chris Noble on behalf of the care sector, specifically domiciliary care.
It's with great pleasure and admiration for our frontline care staff that I stand here today. To see my colleagues and friends recognised for their outstanding dedication and commitment to protecting the public throughout COVID nineteen pandemic, it's truly humbling. You have all shown us what it means to be true heroes, putting the needs of others before your own and going above and beyond call of duty to keep our communities safe. Your tireless efforts to care for the elderly and vulnerable people of South Tyneside during these unprecedented times have not gone unnoticed. You have been at the forefront of the fight against COVID nineteen, working long hours and risking your own health to provide essential care and support to those in need. Your selfless courage and compassion have been an inspiration to us all. You have reminded us of the importance of coming together in times of crisis and the power of kindness and empathy in overcoming adversity. Your contribution to our society during this pandemic has been immeasurable. And today we celebrate your achievements and you are awarded the freedom of the borough. This is a recognition of your bravery and dedication and a testament to the essential role you have played in protecting our communities. I'd also like to express my sincere gratitude to the team at South Tyneside council. Without their ongoing support and that of adult social care team in particular, we simply would not have been able to deliver the consistent care that people across the borough relied on every day throughout the pandemic. Ours is a true partnership and one that I look forward to continuing for many years to come. As we move forward, let us not forget the lessons we have learned during the pandemic and let us continue and value and support our care workers who are the backbone of our society. The pandemic is not over and there remain challenges and risks that our dedicated care staff face every day, but together we can overcome them. Thank you all for your incredible service and congratulations on this well-deserved recognition.
Thank you. I'd now like to call upon Gary Query on behalf of the police and the blue light services.
Thank you, Madam May. I'm a responsible inspector at Socials Police Station and the pandemic brought many challenges. First of all, unprecedented demand. We changed our shift system, we went into twelve-hour shifts and the officers were working long hours. Excuse me. But what it also brought was some other challenges from the people that we looked to deal with. They decided to weaponise COVID and would often threaten officers that they would cuff on them or spit at them to avoid arrest or any interaction with the officers. Indeed, on several occasions, they would do, carry out those very threats. But officers kept coming to work, they kept standing forward and they kept serving the public that they served today. I've got quite a large shift, it's young in service and a lot of them have got families. A lot of the officers were worried. They were worried about taking COVID home to their loved ones, to their family. And they changed the way they worked, they'd have a shower before they went home, bag their clothes up every day. And that's the kind of thing that we had to adjust to with COVID. I'm glad to see that we're in a lot better position today. And it's a real honour to stand here in this chamber with all of you today. I see bus drivers, care workers, NHS workers, and I think it's really put a spotlight on key workers. And I'd just like to thank you all for the freedom of the borough and be with you all today. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd now like to call upon Steve Price on behalf of our family of schools and teachers.
Firstly, can I thank you for inviting me to speak today on behalf of schools and the education sector. It really has provided me with an opportunity to sing the praises of so many unsung heroes within the education and schools, as well as dispelling the myth in the media that schools closed during the pandemic. In fact, quite the opposite. Our doors were open for longer and wider than ever before. We had to look after our vulnerable children and children of critical workers, opening during school holidays with teachers and support staff working around the clock, providing both face-to-face home visits and remote learning. Many staff delivered learning packs to homes and did their call and care duties daily, delivering food packs, packed lunches and emotional support to children and their families. We also needed to remind parents that they were their child's prime and first educators to give them the confidence that they could help with their children's education. Who was it that taught the children to walk, talk and eat before reaching school age? Of course they did, they just needed to be told that. We must also remember the cleaners, the caretakers, the teaching assistants who ensured that all of our school communities were as safe as we possibly could be, despite the fact it was impossible for young children to keep social distancing. And of course, they were referred to as super-spreaders and super-spreaders they were. Many staff were infected several times over and if not infected, were isolating as they'd been in close contact with the child who had been infected. In December twenty twenty, when the lockdown rules were relaxed so that families could come together for Christmas Day, many of our staff, including myself, were not able to do this as we were isolating, not necessarily because we had COVID, but because in our duties we'd come into close contact with the child who had been infected. But finally, I think really I wish to pay tribute to the true heroes. That's our children and the young people who faced the pandemic with true South Tyneside grit and fortitude. They aren't survivors, they conquerors. And on that note, a final four, those best qualities of humanity, kindness and love really can conquer all. Thank you.
Thank you. Finally, although we are limited today by the space and time and the number of sectors we can represent with speeches from colleagues around the chamber, I would like to take a moment to additionally recognise and celebrate those many other local key workers beyond healthcare, police, teachers, who also went above and beyond during the pandemic. There are so many professions even to mention here today. But to give just a flavour, they are our transport workers, utility workers, funeral directors, logistic workers, social workers, frontline council workers across a range of services, as well as our third sector workers and volunteers. And so many of us beyond that who all played a critical and vital roles in keeping us safe and meeting our basic needs through difficult times. We are grateful to and seek to honour today each and every one of you, every person who identifies themselves as a key worker and contributed to that enormous effort over the recent years. I would like to remind everyone that we are also hosting a number of memorial services at eleven AM on Sunday. Six sites across the borough where COVID memorial stones have been erected and will be unveiled. Everybody who has been affected by COVID, including key workers and your friends and family, but also anybody else from the wider community who wishes to come together to reflect on the experience of the pandemic in South Tyneside is warmly invited to join us at these short services where the memorials will be unveiled. You are encouraged to join us at this site most locally to you. But they are South Marine Park in South Shields, West Park in Jarrow, Fountains Park in Hebbin, Conthwaite Park in Whitburn, Front Street in Cleeden and or Bolden Colery between the Gibson Court and Hubert Street. Could I please ask that elected members and officers remain seated until the guests have vacated the chamber and the anteroom? I would encourage a short comfort break and remind members that full council meeting resumes at six PM today. That concludes this afternoon's meeting for the freedom of the borough for our key workers and frontline staff. I personally like to thank you for everything you have done for the people of South Tyneside. Thank you.